To select me because they think I'm qualified and I'm the best person, I don't want to fill a slot. That's how I feel about that.
The Judicial Nominating Commission will meet next Monday, July 9th, to interview the Iowans who apply for the opening on the State Supreme Court. Fifteen of the twenty-two applicants are women. That's what's happening in Iowa on this Monday evening.
I'll call the July 2nd, 2018 City Council meeting to order. Call the roll.
John Hawkins?
Yeah.
Matt McKinney?
Here.
Brian Miller? Jim Talbot?
Here.
Logan Welch?
Here.
Brian will be here in a minute. He's running a little late. Call for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To a republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
락이시는, 통역사원은, 그리고 요청은? This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter on the new agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action at this meeting. But our city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Public information fireworks can only be discharged by the public from fourth, on Fourth of July, from ten AM until midnight. Please be mindful of your neighbors and and the neighborhood, actually, but just be, if you can be respectful, would help greatly. We also have fireworks sponsored by Van Dee Supply will be held tomorrow night. From at ten?
Wednesday night?
Tuesday night?
Third, yeah.
The third, at ten PM at the high school, and there's music at nine PM. And then the city's remind everyone, if you want to get on and have a look at the city's new website, is now up and running since Saturday. If you can check it out and if you see any problems on there, let us know. We have had a couple lectures. So or let us know either way whether you like it or whether you've got a problem with it. Anyone else have any information?
John, two things. I want to thank the city. One of the departments went up and made the Avenue of Flags building, they put a concrete pad in. And there was two benches donated up the Avenue of Flags building, so I think those probably your guys went and came to did that, so I want to thank you on that. And Avenue of Flags, we did place flags today outside, so there's about a hundred flags along the cemetery, so it really looks nice today, the wind is blowing, so. It's cool today. So stop by and see that in the building too.
Yeah, the city crews, didn't they also put a path to make the old Stanford Park, Lion Stanford Park truly handicap accessible now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's much appreciated, I'm sure.
Yeah. Okay. Item B is minutes and following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have one minutes of June eighteen and June twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen. Item two is a resolution on payroll for the period ending June twenty-third, twenty eighteen, and paid on June twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen. Three is a resolution on bills and funds list. How would you like to move?
Move to approve collectively.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. See general agenda, reports and recommendations from the Hotel Motel Tax Board. Around twenty-one with grant applications. Looks like you're it.
Perfect. This was the twenty-first round of the Hotel Motel Tax Board, the board met on June twenty-seventh to discuss presentations and creative recommendation list and funding levels for the city council. Our first one was the City of Webster City, the Blue River Access Project for twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. The board felt that this is a very deserving application. The grant will enhance the need of safety in our community and also attract visitors from the outside to the community to use our local businesses. We, we voted to grant them in full. Doodlebug Club was our second group. We voted to grant them in full as well for their annual reunion event. The board felt another good project, money will be helped. Towards advertising, updating the website and keeping doodlebugs safe during events with properly marked vehicles. Our third one was the Legacy Learning Blue River Valley for a marketing plan, we voted to grant them in full, the thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The board felt this was the target audience for the group and was where their advertising should be focused. The board would like to remind them and all of our applicants that all printed advertising should have a city logo on it if hotel motel funds were used. Board would also like to see some hard data this year. During the review presentations to kind of see where the progress is going with the group. Our fourth one was Webster Community Theater, the hearing loop system and our advertising. We voted to grant them in full, the seven thousand, five hundred dollars. The board felt that this was a great addition to the community theater that will enhance visitors' experience and potentially could bring in new visitors to town. The board would also like to commend Webster Community Theater on bringing in the hard data back to us so we could see how how they're being truly affected by the funds that we grant them. The Webster City Pickleball Group, Pickleball Clinic and Equipment, we voted to grant them the full amount of three thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. This was for the equipment, the board would like to to see the group kind of advertise a little bit more, kind of push their advertising out, Facebook or something like that, to bring in some, some more people to their, to their group.
So, I get a question on that, so you guys voted to fully fund?
We did.
And that failed, right, first time?
Okay, yep, it failed the first time. Then it was a motion to fund just the equipment and the advertising. And then that one got pulled. And then it was a motion to fully fund again. The reason for that, it was actually me that, that flipped it around. I wasn't exactly sure on the instructor for the clinic, if we wanted to fund them. But after being okay with funding the equipment and advertising, then it just makes sense to have the instructor come in and actually give the clinic. My biggest issue personally was the equipment for Fuller Hall to use. That way, it, it wasn't just going towards the group, it was also going towards the community. And we did have a discussion on the City of Webster City Hamlet County Trail Plans. The board feels confident in the decision not to grant the presentation based on the application that was presented. The board does encourage the city to rewrite that application and apply again within six months. Some of the reasons that we felt that way was, this is a bigger than a Webster City, this is a county project. And there wasn't revenue coming in from the county on it, so we felt like us funding it all would be a bad thing. The board also felt there was no guarantee that the project was going to happen outside of our city. So us funding the marketing claim for that or where we could start using our money towards other projects that are already moving forward. We've had discussions about not granting or seeing presentations on something that's brand new that it could be. We could be just throwing our money towards something that might not ever happen. And we'd like to see a little, some legs behind it first. And then the commitments from the outside agencies was another question mark. Is the cameras or the jewels or them, are they going to move forward or are we just kind of, you know, wasting our, our money that we're, we're we have, but it's not like we have a ton of it all the time when we have big projects that could come in potentially. Got a question? Go ahead.
So just, wouldn't allowing whoever it was to present, the city in this case, get those questions answered for you guys potentially?
They potentially could, yes.
Another question I have is, if, if we do grant money to, to an applicant and they do not use it, it can be returned. Correct? Like say, if they're not, if it's not used, any unused funds can be returned to the fund, to the Hotel Motel.
Correct, yeah.
Correct, but what you're asking for is a marketing claim, so that's going to be used. Now, if anybody else ever does anything with eleven thousand dollars that we granted, we made a huge payment for the county, nobody else uses it, then it's wasted money on our side of it. The board recommends the granting of five applications to the total of fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Any other questions?
I'm sure there's more questions on that.
How many applicants did you have in total?
We had seven, but Webster area chamber did go out.
So there were just seven this time?
Uh, six, right.
Six, okay. Alright, thank you.
No, pretty straightforward. Thanks, Andy.
I have a couple of questions, this is maybe more directed to the, the city manager to fill in the blanks here. The Hamilton County Trails Plan, what's the timeline on that? And I know it's in something in the works, or at least being spoken about for quite some time, but is there a window you need to catch on this?
I think the answer is kind of depends, it's if we're trying to get a master plan in place and then be able to go after or apply for some competitive grants. There's the state's Trails Grant Program as well as the state's federal Trail Program, both are competitive and both require matching funds. That matching funds portion of that has to be something that we would have to budget it for, and so if the trail plan would have, would have moved forward, we would potentially would have been able to accomplish a good portion of that, if not entirely, to have some numbers and some things to be able to factor in into the next fiscal year's budget. As we generally try to wrap up and finalize our, our budget February or March of the year. Otherwise, we can certainly wait and reapply for the next round, but then you're still going to have to wait till the next, essentially nineteen, twenty fiscal year or twenty, twenty-one fiscal year to be able to leverage some of those matching funds that we would be required for, for those grants.
One thing I'd like to see myself, I see we have some of the same applicants coming back all the time. I would like to have a closed session or a meeting between the Hotel Motel Grant Committee and the city council. So I can at least see what the rules, I don't know if anybody else has seen them, but I would like to have the opportunity to look at that and make discussions about expanding this out to a lot of other groups.
Maybe as, as, as a means of promotion, that the money's there to encourage other groups to apply?
Yeah, well, we got the same group coming back, they've gotten like sixty thousand dollars over the last several years, and I know there's other groups out there wanting to do stuff, that's why, we need to take a look at this. See what we got with it, so I'd like to have a meeting on that.
It's just hard, we can't force people to apply, you know?
Well, I understand that, but also promotion is the big thing too, Brian.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of groups out here that do a lot of things and they also raise their own money. You know, so I'd like to see us have a workstation with the Hotel Motel guys. And I'd like to have a copy of it too, to see what it is.
So the, the purpose of, of the city's proposal regarding the trails plan would basically just to be a county planning, you know, in, in order to be able to not have the city go out and put in a four or five mile stretch to then decide later what's additional planning, we should have changed that, we should have put this here, because we're going to connect to that other section within the county. It's really to, to be an all encompassing plan, which is smart if you're going to create a trail system or want to create a trail system that may connect. And we were provided with some information on the economic impact of trails, such as the one down that runs through Madrid. I guess I, I'd like to see some discussion on how we could move forward with it. Whether it's apply the money from the city to get the trail study done and then request funds from Hotel Motel Tax for the actual completion. We've already got a section that we've talked about going out to Kendall Yeo. Because then we're, I guess, putting skin in the game on the city's side, and then we can ask for the funds for the actual trail portion.
I think one thing, you know, and I agree with what you're saying, Matt, but I went out to the county some time ago and they had a lot of brochures out there. And they had one about the seven grist wheels, you know, different mills were around at different times. And, you know, you'd have to do a little searching on that, so if a person would want to walk, ride a bicycle or something like that. And there's a lot of points of interest in the county when you get right down to it, and the city has a lot of points of interest. I think we need the synergy of the two groups working together. And I think that's something, you know, I talked to Ken about the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation. And they had an article in the last magazine that between Boone and Dallas County, they have like an economic impact of six point seven five million dollars per year on all their trails between Dallas and, you know, I think the one we all know is that one, the one across the
High Trestle Trail.
High Trestle, yeah. And so we can't match that this week, but maybe next year, you know, we get something that would equate to that.
This is kind of how I see it, and, and this is kind of the lowest common denominator. The Hotel Motel Tax Board, they're, they're supposed to be shepherds of the grant money, and we're supposed to be shepherds of tax dollars. For us to be able to use that eighteen-five towards this project, I think we all feel is probably something we're going to be looking into and working on and tailoring our budgets for in the future. I think it's saving taxpayer dollars doing it this way, using a road tax dollar instead of a, a property tax dollar. So I personally would like to amend the recommendation to add eighteen-five.
So how would you like to, did you like to, do you want to bring this all collectively?
Well, if
or do you want to nominate one at a time for the?
Well, if there's no other discussion, I can make a, a general motion and kind of see how it plays out in the vote, but my, my motion would be that we approve the dollar amount recommended with the addition of the Hamilton County Trails Plan to be fully funded at eighteen-five. Would be my motion.
Well, I think if we do that, you know, to add to your proposed amendment, I would like to see a point of contact person that the, the city would have, you know, like, you know, I was in Daniel's office last week and we mentioned two other names, you know, people that were very big into that. You know, outdoor activities and
We did have a, I mean, we, we had a meeting here with the county and everybody, all shareholders and stakeholders in this thing. Here a few months ago, what, three months, more than three months ago. Some people that are obviously from town who, who have been interested in trails forever and Brian.
Stronner.
Stronner. But so lots of people that are into all this, what, what we have in the county and the town. And of course, you know, even Webster County is big on doing all this now too, and they, they were leaning towards giving it, you know, they're happy to give me some papers and some backing paperwork to say they'd be interested in it too, but, but it's so, you know, there's more going on than what it appears, obviously, but the biggest problem that, that we seem to come up with from the county side of it, their, their information from the meeting was, well, we've been doing this for fifteen years and we were just doing more talk, you know, doing everything, you know, so. And admittedly, you know, they have money, they have money too, except they're like everybody else, their budgets are short. And without us, somebody taking the lead, I guess, is the problem that, that I see at the moment. Unless, unless somebody gets up, starts taking the lead on this thing, then it's, it's never going to get past where they've been, where they've been for fifteen years.
And it's really ours to do that. It really is ours as a county seat and with an established trail system already. It only makes sense for us to take that lead to tailor and, and connect to our existing trails.
And with the, with the Iowa State coming and, and assisting on this, they're actually going to be looking into this trails for the whole region, not just for that it was one of their major parts of there, wasn't that one of them?
University of Iowa, let's, let's confuse the two.
Yeah. I always get being not my uncle.
Just in terms of education, they're different.
The whole cars.
So Logan, your, your motion would be to approve the recommendations presented by the Hotel Motel Tax Board with the addition of funding the Hamilton County Trails Plan for eighteen thousand, five hundred?
Correct.
I certainly understand where you're going, where, where you're coming from. I, I agree, we have to be careful stewards of the tax money. And I don't disagree that that's one route we can take as a council. Because without this plan, there's very little chance to apply for grant money, to proceed forward in a, in a planned manner. I guess I could go either way, my, from, from my standpoint, I think of whether it's in next year's budget or, or when we do decide to move forward, we're going to be spending some taxpayer funds on a trail as well. But we, one way or the other, we need this study, I think.
I guess I would like to see us, you know, we go ahead with Logan's proposal is have, get somebody from the city, I know, you mentioned one name and I know another guy used to do a lot cross training, training out in the country, Andy, you know, so, I mean, you were talking about that one time, you know, yours is probably a little different, but you know, the fitness thing, I think we need to have an advocate or, you know, a person that's going to be the spearhead for us. Because like I say, maybe, you know, county's been doing it for fifteen years, maybe they need to change the spark plug and get a different
But they, they've never done a study, but at this point, have they?
They haven't.
No.
An informal study?
Isn't that your department, Ken? Ken? Isn't that your department that's, that's on the spearheads this whole thing?
Yeah.
So it's, it's Ken's, maybe. So we have a second on?
Second.
Logan's.
Your roll call vote?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Talbot?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Thank you to the Hotel Motel Tax Board.
I guess I would like to say additionally, and I don't, I didn't read, I don't remember the application throughout, but to me, the presentations, if there's doubt, that's where you guys should be like, interrogating is the wrong word, but getting all those questions answered that don't really come out on paper. I mean, that's just how I look at it, I don't know how everybody else feels, but
I agree.
It would have been hard for me, when I read over it, it would have been hard for me to understand everything without asking a lot of questions, and when there's I don't know, there are five or six of you on the board that don't, that don't necessarily have all those answers available. All you have is the information given, so. And we for sure appreciate your work, it's just I just feel like we were given more information than you guys were.
If we do I am too. I am too. Motion on request from the TTMM Promotions DBA Hamilton County Speedway for fireworks permit for July seventh, twenty eighteen.
This would be Todd Staley, his organization at the Speedway are going to do fireworks. They will shoot a few off at the Star Spangled Banner. And then at the conclusion of the race on Saturday night. And I do have an email from Brandon Hayes. He met with Todd and they approved the site and would be on site when they're being set off.
Is there a cost to this permit?
Well, I guess, as long as the fires, the firemen are happy with it, then I'm
Yeah, the firemen have to, I don't want to be the guy that cancels the fireworks.
That's generally the biggest problem we have.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item three is a council memorandum, a resolution providing for notice appearing on proposed plans and specifications and proposed form of contract and estimate of cost for the twenty eighteen Wilson Brewer Park cabins relocation project for August sixth at five thirty-five PM.
Me or Ken or Kent? This is for the, uh, City of Public Carrying for the relocating of the, of the actual cabins out of the Wilson Brewers Resort Park. Currently previously the council previously approved contract with, uh, pedestrian construction to be able to pour the foundations. And this would be for the actual moving of the cabins onto those foundations. I don't believe the foundations have been completed, they were waiting to determine who the contractor who would be moving them would be so they can coordinate any specific requirements on, on pouring the foundations that would be needed for the, the, the actual cabins.
And we're just setting a date and time for the proposals, right?
Yeah.
I moved to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Question, I was driving around saying, there was some earth moving equipment down by the railroad, that was happening. What is, is that?
I'm not sure, it wasn't in the park itself?
It was just, no, just right along, maybe, but you know, Ken?
I know Peterson's had like a, like an earth mover out there, like, you know, a, a, a skid loader or whatever, I don't know, they, they had it out there for a while, I think, anticipating digging into it, and then they backed away, but
Right, and the reason for that, they were a little bit hesitant on that, knowing that coordinating with the moving contractor to do that, it'll be a similar, like a house mover, that company that will do that. And that's why they kind of went back and forth with, with the engineer. And I think the latest is they can proceed and, and I talked to both Gerald and the engineer last week, and, and I think they're going to do the footings. And then maybe do everything up to about the, the top last course of concrete block, they'll leave that until the mover tells them how they want it. Just make sure all the beams aren't, the moving beams aren't in the way.
Maybe that's what it is.
Yeah. But, but I know he said, I talked to him last Thursday, he said that they were going to start on that portion and then would wait on the rest of it till the moving contractor was awarded, so.
Thank you.
Item four is a motion approving twenty eighteen residential A plan amendment and Ridge Affordable Housing Development Agreement letter.
So this agenda item's actually two parts, one is actually City of Public Carrying for August sixth, two thousand seventeen at five forty, as well as approving the engagement letter for legal services with John Downs, who we've used for our taxing and financing and other development and financial projects. So there's Developer Ridge Development LLC is proposing to build nine new homes out in the existing subdivision on Bicentennial Court. There are roughly, he's proposing nine units that haven't been developed. You kind of see here in the, these vacant spots, including, I think, the home here. Bicentennial Court in this area here, which was originally planted, I think, as a cul-de-sac, so that's the general area where he's considering those nine homes. So this is simply approving the engagement letter so that John Downs can move forward preparing the legal documents for the taxing, or development agreements that would provide for tax agreement financing for the construction of those homes and the improvements to those lots. If you have any specific questions.
Is he thinking of putting a cul-de-sac in there?
I, I, I'm not sure if the nine homes are going to encompass that cul-de-sac, I know there's, I'm not sure which lots or which areas he's finalized.
Curious. He's going to use the nine lots that are around the edge?
Nine left that aren't built on.
Okay. Oh, well. Very simple.
So two, five, four, oh, two, three is a lot?
It's just a big lot.
Or that's the cul-de-sac?
That is a lot.
And interesting, surrounded by neighbors. All right. Call for a motion? So moved. Thank you. Any questions?
Who's second?
It's, yeah, Matt. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item five is a resolving Item five is a resolving, resolution setting a, uh, date for public hearing on urban renewal plan for August sixth at five forty P M. And that's obviously what we were just talking about, so.
Move to approve.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item six is a resolution adopting employee pay plan for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
She's back recording, um, so the re- recommendation obviously for, uh, everyone's, um, this knowledge. With this year, we only have the two collective bargaining units with, uh, the non-public safety bargaining unit that we previously had decertifying. And we've previously, uh, uh, whatever approved increase we've done for the non-public safety, um, collective bargaining group was carried over to the non-bargaining. In this case, we're going off of the, the two ex- remaining, uh, collective bargaining units, um, the firefighters union as well as the public safety police units. Both of those units are getting a three percent increase. The recommendation is to carry on that three percent to the other non-bargaining employees. And if you recall, we've also, um, this past spring, um, part of the plan encompasses the adjustments, uh, for so, for some of those, um, uh, line employees. That we adjusted to be more competitive with the, with the market in general. If you have any specific questions, last year we all, we did a two percent increase, so this is definitely a, a three percent. We're seeing averages of two and a quarter up to three percent. With, throughout the state with cities in that range.
Anyone have any questions? Call for motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Item seven is a council memorandum, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a conditional loan agreement with Perrin Industries Incorporated located at nineteen forty-one James Street, Webster City, Iowa.
The agenda item before is conditional loan agreements to be entered between the city, Webster City and Perrin Industries that would provide for, um, a, a conditional loan that would cover the cost of, uh, uh, electrical, um, upgrade to the facility. The total cost of that set upgrade is estimated at thirteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars. The conditional loan agreement specifies, this is a new business that's starting up in the old bowling alley on James Street, just, uh, on the west side of town. Their projections are arranged between thirty to forty jobs over the next ten years, provided that they meet their, their annual projections as outlined in the memo and the, the, um, conditional loan agreements. Ten percent of the loan would be, um, could be forgivable, uh, if they meet those projections up to the, the full amount of that. They're going to be a manufacturer of precision turn machine parts, um, with, uh, specific tolerances. Specifically tailored towards the aeronautic and medical industries as well as other, um, industries to be targeted as well. John Perrin is here from, uh, Perrin Industries. If you have any specific questions, he may be able to answer, or does Zach and I can answer pertaining to the, the agreement?
I have no questions that really pertain necessarily to the, uh, loan, but, uh, just out of curiosity, um, what's the timeline to get up and running, Jonathan? You might be asking.
So we anticipate our machinery being on.
Do you wanna come up to the?
Sorry, John. Should have told you.
So currently we anticipate our, uh, equipment being on the floor at the end of, uh, this month, and will be in production in August.
Awesome. Been working hard out there, I see, so.
Yeah, I've put in a lot of hours there.
One other question, how did you learn about this?
I'm sorry, Sydney.
How did you learn about this option for a forgivable loan?
Uh, I, um, approached Lindsay Henderson, um, actually for any grants available, uh, city or state. This is us getting the business going, um, and, uh, and just inquire, inquire if there's anything available. I, uh, I was also, um, it was suggested by the electrician that quoted that I approached the city as well.
Oh, very good.
What's the background of Perrin Industries? Could you tell us that, please?
Uh, yeah, so, um, my father, Dave Perrin, uh, is across the street, and he, he, uh, runs Perrin Machine Company. He's been making automotive appliance. And hydrant parts, faucet parts for, I guess, thirty years in Webster City. And, uh, and so this is a new venture that I'm taking on, uh, and we're really looking just to focus on aerospace and medical at this time. So we believe that there's a good market for that.
Have you done your market research with the industries to see what's out there?
Yeah, um, quite, quite extensively. Um, this, this company is, is, uh, being funded in part by an investment group out of Colorado. And, uh, and so collectively, we've put quite a bit into, uh, to develop our business plan.
Fighting stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Appreciate it.
I should add, part of the condition of the conditional loans is it's, uh, thirty-year, thirty full-time employee equiv- or equivalents at an average wage of twenty-two fifty per hour, um, based on the projected sched- schedule.
I'll move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. Good luck, John. Item eight is discussion on potential sale and development of twelve oh-three East Second Street. Burke, is he gonna get a copy? Do you have a copy of that?
I don't. We had previously discussed, and as you're all, all well aware, the city took possession of the property at twelve oh-three Second Street, um, last fall. Since then, uh, we've abated the existing structures that were there of, of asbestos and demolished structures. Now we've, uh, now that we've completed all that, um, we are entering the next phase of the, in determining how the next step for developing or repurposing that, that property. I understand it was earlier on, there's been some interest with individuals or groups interested in purchasing the property and developing that. So, uh, we briefly discussed this at a prior meeting as to how to go about, um, um, selling that sort and, and marketing that. I believe it was the, at least the council's desire to see a meaningful reuse of that property and, and ensure that, uh, whatever development goes in there would conform to, I guess, the goals and objectives of further enhancing, um, businesses and job creation in the community. Looking at a couple other examples throughout the country, um, if you have a copy of an R F P, um, that was, uh, crafted for this particular piece of property in our community, essentially, the R F P would, would go out to any interested buyers who are, would be interested in the property. They'd have to submit some documentation, um, such as site plan, um, business plan, um, as well as some other documents of, of what their intended use of the property would be. Timeline for developing that, um, as well as additional information such as job creation, um, and, and just have, for the council to have an overall idea of what that development would be in terms of an impact. That's before you just as a draft, you know, you choose to go in the direction and just market it, uh, put a for sale sign out there and take the, the highest bidder or lowest bidder. We did get an appraised, an appraisal for the property. The appraisal was estimated at twenty-four thousand dollars for the, for the appraisal. To date, we have about twenty thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars, um, invested in that property between all the work that has gone, as well as legal fees associated with, with that piece of property. So, and the appraised value, as I said, is twenty-four thousand.
Burke, you, you wanna listen?
I just wanna state my feelings on this whole deal. I've basically been a neighbor to that property, witnessed the asbestos, the demolition. I've maintained that property for the city. I've not sent anything. You guys put me through nightmares on the year that we did that road construction. I didn't ask for anything from the city. I've, in one-on-one, I've sat down with Daniel, never went anywhere with a true answer. Just hang on, we'll give you an idea. Without a definite black and white business plan, I, my goals, and I sent emails to all you gentlemen in Carroll, I don't know if I included you or not. But, I mean, obviously, the interested parties, where are they at, Daniel? And the people who, you were telling me the whole time want the property, nobody that you've named has any intentions of wanting that property. I'll give you twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand right now. Sell it to me. Let me build my business. Let me build the gridiron. Put up my catering building. Let me have, why can't I grow? I mean, you go out and lure Quickstar into town and give him this gentleman thirteen grand, I'm not asking for a penny from you guys. I just wanna grow my business. My customers brought a lot of money to Webster City, where Iowa's best tenderling this year. If you haven't been out recently, come out and look at the map. Come out and look at the testimonies that people have left. Didn't even know what Webster City was till we came here, buying our gas, buying our milk, scanning our hotels. I employ thirty people right now. Could probably put on another dozen. This is garbage, disrespect. Been here ten years, taxpayer, business owner, and, you know, I just, I just, you know, I'm a neighbor.
Burke, I can appreciate.
Totally, totally just disrespectful scenario.
I can appreciate your passion. I understand you wanting to expand the business. I, from my perspective, Daniel needs to bring it to council to ask for our direction. And we could decide to completely go different than this. This is his suggestion.
No, and I just want you guys to know my feelings. I didn't get, I got one response out of my email.
Until we talked about it, I didn't feel.
One response, good idea. You got my, I wish you the best. I didn't get anything. You know, I, it just, it saddens me that you got taxpayers in this community, you've been here for years and years, who state their opinions, who wanna help this community, but we always go the opposite direction. And I understand this is round one, and it needs to go. My lawyer said you guys are gonna have to probably meet three more times before you decide how you're actually gonna be able to sell this property. Been in discussion with him. He's like, give him a number again tonight, buy it.
I guess, Burke, I took your email as you showing me your stance, which I had talked to you previously, and I pretty much knew your stance.
And I apologize, the email bounced around a little bit. I'm still unhappy about Quickstar in my, not in my backyard.
And I get it.
I get it.
But I, I personally had people, other than you, ask me about the property, and I told them the same thing.
With the same sincerity that I have.
We need to decide.
Two of them that I know that we talked about one night at my establishment, Brian, don't want anything to do with that property now that's been demolished.
But up until.
Cause they wanted to flip it.
Yeah, up until we decide, I, I mean, none of us are in a position to tell anyone.
I get it. I understand. I just wanna state my opinion, but you guys, I am very, I want that property. I'm owning it for you guys. I'm taking care of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against.
There's garbage over there. I go pick it up.
Yeah, I'm not against.
Whenever we get in the new landfill, I called John and said, hey, they're putting garbage over here again. Called Matt when there was a squatter living in there. I just wanna enhance my business and let this community have, you know, we wouldn't be here ten years without great customers like you folks. And, but I just don't feel like, you know, they're getting the opportunity to expand. It's right there. It's been vacant. It was a meth lab.
Well, I'll go back and, to what I said, I think it has to come for discussion here, and we could make a decision tonight on the, the direction we want, we'd like the city manager to take. I guess if we're gonna talk about it, I'll, um, I'll go on record to say, in my opinion, unless we, there's people that I don't know of that are interested in the property. I'd like us to set what we think the value is and put it up for sale.
I agree. I, I think what, what Daniel gave us is, is what some communities have probably used in the past, or maybe a more like red tape and, and a strategic way to, um, control the sale of a piece of property, but I feel this is a little bit too, uh, heavy-handed, um, for this specific piece. I'm just looking to recoup our, our investment in the property.
I understand that. And that's all, yeah. Low.
No, I, I, I got you. I, I know where you're coming from, and tonight.
When this all started, Logan, if the good old boy theory is out the window, uh, one of the neighbors will probably get an opportunity to buy it first. I mean, that was the statement that was said. Kevin and I at the nuisance meeting offered a dollar, and we paid to have it cleaned up. Yeah, what it costs is thirty grand. That's what you guys have in it.
No, and, and, and I'm with you. Again, this is just a, what the city manager does, he gives us some, like, options, some ideas, and then we can kinda run with what we need to. This is actually the first time we can openly speak about it tonight.
And that's why I'm here.
And, and, yeah, and I appreciate you coming. Um, again, y- your input's valid, and, and it's definitely gonna help us tailor how we wanna sell this property. But I'm with Matt, you know, I, I'm, I'm fine as long as we recoup our value into it. Um, I don't necessarily care so much about the use of it. But to help out the neigh- the neighboring property owners, that being you, um, would be ideal. So if we can find a, a, a solution that we recoup our loss into that property and help out the business owner or, or our neighbor, um, that's what I wanna come out of nice discussion.
Okay, well, I just appreciate.
I guess my personal opinion is right now, I, you, we've talked about twenty-four thousand, you made us an offer. I don't know why we need to go through the whole rigmarole.
Thank you.
I mean, I think it needs to be just taken care of, because let's be honest about it. No, I'm just speaking for myself. Please understand it.
Thank you.
I understand.
What's the expense to the amount?
And Burke, I don't, like, at least for me personally, I, there's negativity with you, and I don't know why, cause really, no one's talked about doing anything with it. I can, I can understand the delay on your side.
We don't have that much time. I could go back to a couple of, not one-on-one personally with you, Brian, but yeah, I am, I do have a little bit of a chip on my shoulder on the whole deal. And it goes back to, we really started with our little, our last city manager. You know, when he told me to survive, Brian Stein and I were at the East Building. He showed us the first blueprint, and they were gonna take Brian's driveway out. And Brian and I were sitting there talking, and it's like, better figure out a way to sell burgers. Survive. You know, I'm like, you know, there's a reason why that guy's house is sitting abandoned, it's probably, the roof's gonna fall in.
From, from the day we decided to start doing.
Yeah, I do have a little beef, and I do, I wanna express it, because I'm very sincere about this opportunity. I wanna do something with my business to grow, bring on some new employees, and for Webster City. You know, we're buying an Elks Building that, I still haven't figured that decision out yet. I still can't figure out your round, your, your intersection.
Well, the only thing I can say about that lot, Burke, is that, you know, that's why we don't listen completely to you, because obviously, we don't agree with everything.
No, I get it. I get it.
So that's why we, we put, you know, Quickstar are coming, and, and the Elks Building, we will buy, and we, we, we bought. So, but, but in, but in this case, I think you have a fair, I think you have, you know, as far as your business goes, you have a fair, what you're saying is fair.
And I think we, we haven't had a lot of, uh, at least a lot of opportunities to help existing businesses. Um, so I, I'd love to see your business grow. I mean, they eat there multiple times. It's a, it's a great place to eat, and we don't have a lot of choices when it comes to that option. So if you're, if you've got a, the ability to do it, I, I'd like to see that we just move forward with figuring out how to sell the property, see if it grows.
Just so I understand, this would be just like any other property we bought, Zach, like, if we would say we'd entertain his offer, then we'd have to have three readings on it where anybody could come in and.
Yep.
Or public hearing, where somebody could come in and say, I offer twenty-four thousand and one dollar, whatever, so.
Did we, do, have we had anybody else actively come in and ask anything, cover up the state? So should we just, did you wanna try and set up a public hearing then, for the next council meeting?
Yeah, I think, you know, to be honest, we've got somebody that actually wants to do something in Webster City instead of chasing unicorns and fairy dust. We've got, you know.
And, and, and if those other people are interested, they'll have their shot, and that's that.
Yeah.
You're looking at a, you're looking at about a month, essentially, cause the next council meeting, if you just wanna list it.
And we're gonna set the public.
You gotta set the public hearing at the next meeting, and then you're into first meeting in August, where you have that public hearing and approve any such purchases.
We can, what was that?
Can't you set the public hearing tonight?
No, it's not.
So let me, let me ask legal counsel here on this. So we've had public hearings before, but isn't that when it's not the asking price?
We have, we've, we have set the public hearing, set the asking price. We've done it before with like, well, or with, great, because we set the public hearing all at once.
I get you.
Yep, I get you. So, so sixteenth, set the public hearing, right, uh, what's August first? Is that the first meeting or?
Six.
August sixth, hold the public hearing. And then after that, we go through the process of doing all our, our stuff and get it sold.
So that'd be September before you.
Well, cause yeah, have Jack have you out the date, all that stuff, yeah, and work with his attorney to get that over. It'll be, yeah, it'll probably be, I mean, that's normal though. Of course, I have the government, it takes time to get through the process.
Well, and you need, you did do some, you know, steps to, you know, to prepare for the, the purchase. So I mean, the time may not be too detrimental to either party, um, a- as long as we know the plan going forward. And, and you know what our intentions are with the property would help too. So I think that's a big issue. There's a lot of what ifs and what's really gonna come of this, and, and I totally understand. I think that's a big issue, is there's a lot of what ifs and what's really gonna come of this and, and I totally understand. I was kinda confused of the direction we're gonna go until tonight, cause again, I can't really openly speak with everybody about this. Um, uh, unless we're in an open meeting setting, so, uh, it was good to hear my opinion shared, so.
And that's why I'm here, I just wanted to illuminate the hearsay, I, I spoke with you, I've. Spoke with Jim, John, I've probably stood at his table entirely too long when he's trying to enjoy the meal with his wife. I'm just sitting there looking at that property, you know, drooling and, but no, I mean, I just wanna know where we're at and it's going in the direction. I talked to Eric, my attorney in Waterloo today and he's like, he goes, Burke, just tell him about it. That's, and that's what I did, and I, I wanted, I'm, I'm so passionate about my business and about Webster City that. You know, I, I just don't get what's so hard for, maybe it's my, how I'm communicating it to our city manager or to Brian and. And I just, I just wanna continue to have that opportunity and, and just like mail this out to the. Unicorns and the fairy tales like Jim just did, I mean, it's, it's, why, I mean, they are right there. And I guess that's all I got to say for you guys and thanks for hearing me out, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Zach, what, did they have to set a price prior to that? And just having a public hearing to sell the property and then they take.
Well, if you get a formal offer.
Get a phone offer from both.
Well, if you get a formal offer, and then, yeah, before, probably the next week.
To get it on the agenda.
Cause then the, the public hearing is based on the offer, the city's received an offer for the purchase of the property located twelve oh three.
So bring color in and offer.
Well, he's made a verbal offer, what else do we need?
Attorney Eric, get on Waterloo and send you that. Yeah, cause that'd be tomorrow. So just get it done tomorrow.
And, and maybe this should be stated too, um, the appraised value, can we put a little background to that? Just so we, so Burke knows what he's buying and why that value was set.
Sorry, I wanna follow you.
Well, the appraised value is.
However, they came up with that, you're asking.
Yeah, how'd we come up with twenty-four thousand dollars for that two point six eight acres? Was also extremely similar to the amount we actually have in it, right?
Twenty thousand in it.
And, and what we have in it is asbestos removal, uh, the, the foundation removal, some legal fees and what else?
Fraser.
I mean, I think all of us have said from the beginning that we just want to get what we put into it.
Yeah, that's my understanding, and I think if we got a gentleman making an offer, I think.
So do you want, do, uh, you, you, I guess it's up to you, Burke, it's somewhere between twenty and twenty-four thousand, so. You, you put in whatever offer you think. Some of this out of it, the council's after the twenty, we want, we wanna recoup it.
Right, and that's, that's what I was alluding to, I wanna know the actual value to, yeah.
So we, we, we've got to cover our twenty thousand something, is what, isn't that where we're at?
Yeah.
Think that'd be remarkable, we actually get out what we got into something instead of getting.
And, and as a bone to the, to, to a, to a, to a, um. To somebody that's in, you know, that's has a business in town, obviously you would think if we didn't make four thousand dollars up, it wouldn't be a big deal.
Nineteen nine's what you're saying?
So, I, any other, that's, that's up to you, so we'll just leave that out in the air.
Do we need to move to? Connie has some knowledge for us.
No, Connie, from Webster City, Iowa, block four, block seven, we're doing extradition. No, I'm not bidding. Don't we have a precedent where when we have property like this or an empty lot, that we offer it first to the adjoining neighbors?
See, I always thought that too, when it came to our demolition.
It's happened in the past.
Residential law.
Residential, okay, so it's different.
Ask and answer.
Thank you. Okay, next section is D, reports. Reports, recommendations of officers, boards and commissions. Do we have any reports? Move on to, uh, E, number one is update report, Zach?
Uh, just briefly, uh, Elks building, we just discussed that, so we've prepared all the documents. We're going to be providing a slight amendment to the agreement that we'll bring back to you guys based on some of the C D B G stuff. That we've got involved with the state down there, just wants to slow down a little bit, so we'll, we'll take care of that and we'll bring it back to you guys for the next, next council meeting. Uh, the street adjoining land located west of Windsor Manor, if you guys know where Lynx Avenue is, we've talked about this before. We acquired a piece of property from Marilyn Williams's trust at last council meeting, and this is the other portion. We got all this stuff finally from Windsor Manor and it's all checks out, so. Uh, next counseling, again, you guys will have a, a resolution to accept that so that how you own an adjoining piece from Wall Street all the way to Lynx Avenue. For any future street development or situation we run into in the future if we have to close down Wall Street again. And then, uh, abandoned properties, was a big one for abandoned properties, I think we filed on five, five more properties. All over town, so. The time for springtime to start that moving in.
Where we at on that, y'all, street property?
Uh, set for trial in twenty-seventh. Twenty-fourth is there, twenty-fourth.
Yeah, just try by, it looks like they're not doing anything to even try to maintain it.
Speaking of that property, I know, I know the neighbors are still upset about the, our nuisance mowing, the front to backyard. So, can I ask that, like, do we just mow the front now with nuisance properties, we don't mow the backyards? Or is that up to the nuisance property contractor?
We avoid mowing it, they shouldn't have to.
Yeah, I think there's been some issues with the, the, the front getting mowed, the back not, I don't know if they just can't.
Unless, um, unless Lanny's going down there mowing the sidewalks.
No, it's, uh, sometimes it's about access, um.
The debris.
Yeah, debris. So like one, like eleven thirteen Hamilton Road that we're working on. It's getting overgrown, but we can't have our, our contractor going to mow it, cause there's literally debris, mattresses. And so, he's not gonna go under until that's settled and so it just depends.
This one's been mowed for years, there can't be that much.
Yeah, I, again, the neighbor, we all know the neighbor, you know, uh, reached out to me, let me know that the backyard was not mowed, but the front yard was and. Uh, I'm just bringing, I just, I was just curious if.
We're paying contract.
I'm sure Lacey can probably reach out to the judge and get that figured out.
My other question is, are we paying for a full mow and getting half?
Pay by the hour.
So that, that'll be the last one of this round and we'll start that way, you know, the next four, which.
But they got a continuation last time, didn't they?
Yeah, he's not getting one this time, the judge has already stated it's going, uh, trauma, there's some urgency or something like that, but.
He'll think of one.
I'll see.
All right, uh, move to a jury. All those in favor say aye? Aye, same sign.